I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Des?
Here.
Mr. Rockham?
Let the record show, Mr. Rockham was called away unexpectedly on business, just late yesterday, so he regrets not being able to be here. We did have an executive session at the end of our meeting last month, as well as one today before this meeting, so, Mr. Clark, can you summarize, please?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. At the conclusion of our meeting on June 20th, the board held an executive session to discuss police contract negotiations, personnel, and potential litigation. And earlier this evening, the board held an executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel, and to consult with township consultants regarding an agenda item this evening, the advertising of the bid for the Falls Municipal Complex.
Okay, thank you. We'll start off our meeting with two presentations, which is always a great way to start off the meeting and let people know what's happening in the community. We'll begin with our Fire Marshal, Rich DiPulito, who's going to announce or talk about his fire academy and recognize some of his participants.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm standing up, Jeff. Let me put on my cheaters here. We have just finished our third Citizens' Fire Academy, which I believe went pretty well. The third one was, I think, was run a little bit better than the first couple. We ironed some things out. And we ran five sessions. It consisted of learning the requirements to be a firefighter in the state of PA, live fire extinguisher training, some first aid, CPR, and AED training, a demonstration of various emergency services equipment that's available in Falls Township. And then we did a fire inspection of a local restaurant and a hotel to try and teach what you should look for when you work and travel, keep yourselves and your family safe. I believe, you know, in my opinion, the program was well received by those who attended. Eddie, could you come up, please? This said, pulling from my office without the help of Eddie and Mike Margeram and John Weiss from my office, we wouldn't be able to pull this off. Unfortunately, the other two had prior commitments, couldn't make it tonight. So, I think tonight, with vacations and such, I think we have four out of our class we're able to attend. I realize it is tough during the middle of the summer for being able to make it, but I do want to appreciate, I do appreciate these folks taking the time out to come out. So, without further ado, if I could have, hold on, please, I had to take the last one, couldn't make it at the last minute, Christine Harvey, Charlie and Carol Pantano, and Jack Murphy, if you could all please come up. Let's see, I got Carol's.
My fault, I have a guy at my house, Jack, I don't get it.
Even with my glasses, I don't have a problem.
Again, I'd like to thank these folks for taking the time out. You know, it was five, I guess, five sessions, couple hours probably each night. I know everybody has busy schedules, but hopefully you got something out of it. I appreciate the township letting us do this. Hopefully, we'll do it again in the spring if we have the interest. I will post something, or you can let me know via email or Facebook. And again, thanks to the township and the supervisors, Pete, for letting us do this. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we get a picture with you and?
I'd like you guys to come down if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. We can stand through the light.
Bob, I don't get a lot of heat. Bob, right here.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Bob, thank you.
Where'd he get going again? I'll save you some.
Okay. opportunities for residents to sort of learn more about those activities or the jobs that are done by the firefighters, as well as the police officers here. So, you know, information about future academies is always available on the website, and probably the cable channel as well. So, check into that if it's something that interests you. We'd more than happy to have you involved. Our next presentation is something that's, you know, kind of very exciting for us. It's not often that you can recognize people that have never done something that has never ever been done before, or done something that's never ever been done before. Obviously, this township is very, very old, and the Pensbury School District goes back a very long time, and I don't know exactly when the Pensbury School District began playing baseball, but never in the history of the school district has the baseball team won a state championship. And so, obviously, as people know, almost a little over a month ago, I guess, the boys' varsity baseball team won a pretty remarkable victory, you know, in the last inning, at the last at bat, you know, just what I was listening to on the radio in the driveway of my neighbor's house, and it was funny that he had a delay on however he was getting it, or I guess it was on his tablet. And so, while we were hearing about, you know, runner heading toward home plate, even before it was announced on that tablet that, you know, the runner had scored, we could hear cheers from houses all over the neighborhood who were not on a delay. And so, we knew he scored even before, you know, or we, you know, before we even heard about it. So, it really was a remarkable thing. We're honored to have the coaching staff and some of the players here. Obviously, again, summertime, it was difficult to get everybody here. We appreciate the members who are here to be here, and we are going to issue a commendation to these guys. So, I'll just read part of it. Whereas the Pensbury baseball team did win the 2017 Suburban One League title, the District One Championship, and its first-ever Pennsylvania State Championship. And whereas through their dedication, determination, and skill, the Pensbury High School baseball team, led by head coach Joe Pacey and assistant coach Kirk Cramp, have brought recognition and pride to the citizens of Falls Township, and have served as valuable role models to the residents of the Township of Falls, as well as the other communities of the Pensbury School District. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Falls, on behalf of the citizens of Falls Township, does hereby issue this commendation to the players and coaches of the Pensbury High School baseball team, congratulating them for their hard work and for their unprecedented success. Is there a motion to approve this commendation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, guys. I know Coach Pacey's here. I don't know if he wants to say a few words or introduce who he has here from his team.
So, like you said, there's difficulty getting kids out here, but we had 13 players that just ended their season for Falls Legion at Springford High School in the regionals today, so there's, we're missing 13 of those guys. But the ones that are here, Billy Bethel is just graduated. He was the winning pitcher in the state championship game amongst, you know, nine other wins throughout the year. He's heading to Chestnut Hill College, where he's going to play two positions, hopefully pitcher and an infield position. Christian Buchler is a rising junior, was actually part of the no-hitter we threw against Holy Ghost at Trenton Thunder Stadium. I'd like to throw that out there.
That's good. Yeah, I don't like.
Tyrone Nages, Jr., two-year captain. He's actually going to Westchester University to play football next year. And Ryan McCarty is back there. He was also the starting pitcher of the state championship game, had a couple walk-off wins in states and districts. You know, four important parts, unfortunately, three of them are gone, but Christian is here. We're missing 20 kids with games and work and whatnot here. But I'd also like to recognize Brian Sinkowitz, who was a first-year JV head coach for us this year, and a phys ed teacher within the district. We're hoping gets hired back. Dave Howe teaches at William Penn Phys Ed. He's first-year varsity assistant, but was a JV assistant coach for a few years. The man in the orange is Kirk Cramp, who's been in the district for years coaching football and wrestling at BAME, and then been with the baseball program for 12 years. And Coach Tom Pettit, who is a phys ed teacher at West and first-year varsity assistant coach, and was the JV head coach before that. For all the guys that aren't here, and the ones that are, it's been, you know, since August that we've been working hard to make this happen, plus the years and years of camps and training. And Jeff will tell you, his son playing middle school for BAME, right? But, you know, the community outreach, and these kids are celebrities, you know, to all these little kids in the area. We run camps. Ty and Billy ran the camps, and they'll tell you, it's a lot of fun when the kids really are excited to be around them. So, we appreciate everything you guys have done for us, and hopefully, we can bring back another one next year.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Why don't you have the guys come up, and we'll present this to you, and get some pictures?
All right. Come on up, guys.
You're kind of hiding. Move to the left a little bit, Brian. Or maybe, yeah, that way.
Nobody ever takes pictures with you, only.
Why don't you get our picture taken?
Thank you, guys.
What's going on?
Is it really?
the least we can do to recognize those young men and the coaching staff for all the hard work they put in. They certainly deserve as much attention as, and hopefully, they're soaking up all the attention they're getting. So, they've definitely earned it. Mr. Gray is getting the public comment sign-in sheet. We actually don't have anybody signed up, so we'll move on to item number two, which is certificate of appropriateness for 73 West Tyburn Road. Mr. Gray?
Yes. As mentioned, 73 West Tyburn Road. The project consists of an addition in the front of the house, a three-season room that will be white vinyl. This has been reviewed and approved by the Hall Board. The applicant's name is Elwood Merk. The board is asked to consider approving this certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. I believe someone is here, Mr. Gray. Okay, all right. Are there any comments or questions regarding the application for the homeowner?
I have no questions.
I have none.
No.
Okay. All right, so, as Mr. Gray said, it's been approved by the Historic Review Board for the three-season addition. If there's no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number three is Cam Real Estate Partners LP Drive Time Development, waiver of land development. This is 1381 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Mr. Gray?
Yes. The project consists of improvements of the, of an addition of a storage area in the existing storage yard. The expansion proposes approximately eight acres of new impervious coverage. No change in the existing building's footprint is proposed. The board is asked to consider this land development at this time.
Okay. Is there somebody here from, okay, if you don't want to come forward and just, there are some easels that are kind of folded up, you can certainly take those out for your display. Do you have more than one, or just one set of displays? Just one? All right. If you had more than one, we'd ask you to turn one to the public, but that's fine. Yep. Just make sure you're speaking to the microphone, that's all.
Sure. My name's Ryan Rickles. I'm a real estate project manager for the company Drive Time. We are seeking the waiver of land development today, here to answer any questions you have about the development or the business.
Okay. If you don't mind, just giving us an idea of what exactly the business does, why they need this, you know, why they want to do these improvements, and we'll go over the waivers a little bit. I think you're looking for about six waivers.
Okay.
Yeah, so Drive Time, we are the nation's fourth-largest used car seller. We sell, I think last year, 155,000 cars. We have a network of 144 car dealerships. You might have noticed, there's one just down the street, actually, on William Penn Highway. So, this facility here is not a retail facility. This is a facility where we first send all of our cars that initially come in from auction. They'll go to this facility, and that's where they'll be fixed up, paint, body, mechanical issues, just every little thing with the cars. And then after that, they sit on the site until it's ready for them to be distributed to the area car dealership. And so, one of the characteristics of this site is it has a really great building for our use, has a great square footage, it's industrial zone for what we need, but the site, we need more parking space for the vehicles in the back, more storage space. So, that is one of the biggest waivers we're asking for, is additional impervious area. And so, that's what we have proposed here on the site. You can see a lot of this area is existing pavement, and then this area out here is all the proposed new pavement.
Okay. Okay. So, how much are questions for the applicant? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
Just so we're clear here in the beginning, but you won't be selling any cars?
Correct.
Just repair and?
Correct.
And today, will they be coming in on tractor and trailer?
Yes, all cars will be coming, all the cars come in and come out on car haulers.
Okay.
Any idea how many cars you'll have on the site at a time?
We'll fit as many as we can, but it's, I think I've done a layout, and it's near like 1,500.
Wow.
Spaced appropriately, that is.
Okay. The vehicle, the car carriers you have coming in, the trucks, what route are they going to take?
We do all our trucking third-party. It's not, we're not our own truckers, but they're going to find the, whatever way is the easiest to get in on the site. I guess Tyburn Road.
Yeah, they have to use Tyburn Road to kind of enter from.
Okay. All right. Good. I mean, it's a.
And out on Tyburn.
Yeah. Good. That's the good answer. I mean, obviously, you're right on the border here with Marsville Borough, and as you move from this property into Marsville Borough, it's very residential. And so, that part of Pennsylvania Avenue is, you know, not ideal for trucking at all. So, I was hoping the answer you gave me.
So, they go right and they go down towards Tyburn?
Good. Okay. Good. You are going to be doing some painting in these cars, you said? Repairing, painting, doing new paint jobs?
Yep. We'll have industrial paint booths in there to just do touch-ups. The cars we're getting in are not cars that have been demolished by any means. They're cars that are more or less have a door ding, something like that, so they're minor.
Okay. Right. Now, certainly, one of the questions I had was environmental protections you're going to take in having this building. It's, I don't know if that has to meet any kind of DEP requirements or?
I think we're well under the limits. There are permits that our paint booth vendor will pull for, I think it's called the refinish equipment permit, something like that, so, but that'll all be pulled.
Okay. All right, so the waivers, first off, obviously, the waiver of land development, traffic study, sidewalks and curbs, street trees, and locations of properties at the 200 feet. Mr. Sullivan, any concerns from you about any of those waivers?
All right. No concerns, Mr. Harvey. I just want to point out that there's still traffic information required by the traffic engineer, and I would assume the applicant will comply with that requirement.
That's correct. We'll comply.
Okay. I think I also saw something from, about the Shade Tree Commission. Is that true as well? Oh.
Yeah, we did receive a letter from Shade Tree, and we revised our plan to comply with their comments.
Okay. All right. And also the Fire Marshal as well?
Yeah, his comment was more, we'll comply, and it'll be handled more directly during building permit process.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
No.
No? Any public comment? See no hands. All right, so this would be Resolution 17-19. Okay. All right, is there a motion then to grant Cam Real Estate Partners LP Drive Time Development a waiver of land development for 1381 South Pennsylvania Avenue? It'll be Resolution 17-19.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda?
I think one of you assigned this resolution.
Is item number four, Harsco, another waiver of land development. This is 905 South Port Road. This is within the KIPC, the old US Steel complex. Mr. Gray?
The applicant's proposed improvements consist of the construction of a 72-foot by 140-foot storage tent, 10-foot by 20-foot building addition, and 70-foot by 55-foot concrete pad extension. Representing the applicant tonight is Mr. Eric Garten.
As Mr. Gray said, I'm Eric Garten from Gilmore and Associates, here on behalf of Harsco. Before we get into exactly what we're doing, I just wanted to kind of put in perspective where we are in the world down in US Steel, since it's a large, large site. But as you'll see on the aerial here, obviously Delaware River, the port's down here, this little 10-acre leased parcel is what we're talking about. If you've been down US Steel and driven around, you might have even missed it. That's kind of how tucked away it is, so, just give you some perspective on it. This is our proposed plan, which is a storage tent and a small building addition. Frankly, with the location and proximity to the landfill, the product that's been stored outside for so long is dirty, at the end of the day, if that makes sense to you, thanks to the Seagulls. So, the operations of the facility aren't changing, the number of employees at the facility aren't changing. We really just want to get the product covered, so that when these guys ship it to the end users, it's not dirty. So, with that, we're here tonight seeking a waiver of land development approval. We did get a draft copy of a resolution for approval. Everything in there is fine with us, including three waivers. So, at this point, would open up to the board if you guys had any questions for us.
Well, again, first, you talked about the product, and you several times used the term "product." What's the product?
I'm going to, Russ Dickert from Harsco will give you a better description than I can about what they exactly do there.
Thank you.
Good evening. We take recycled burnt coal from the power plants, and we grind it up, make sandblasting abrasive out of it. We typically ship it in two-ton totes, bags, 100-pound bags, 50-pound bags, and also, we have bulk trucks that come in that we load through the silo system. The plant's been there for, I believe, 17 years. I, myself, have been there about four years. Like Eric said, it's just been pretty messy trying to send this to customers. A lot of times, we have customers that then send it out to stores, you know, your Home Depots and whatnot, and they don't want it when it's covered with dirt. So, that's the whole intention of this building, and thank you. Any other questions or?
Well, any other comments or questions for the applicant or Mr. Garten? Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mine's just curious, does your, where do you get the call from? By truck or by barge?
The coal used to come in from typically Trenton Power Plant, Beasley's Point, down by Atlantic City. That product has been slowing down now. We've come up with a new product from Germany. It comes in through Kinder Morgan. We bring it in by ship, then truck it over to the plant, and it's a similar product to the burnt coal. It's just something they use in the smelting process in Germany, and it's been another good product.
Okay.
Thank you. That was all, Ed.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. All right, so, talked about the waivers, requiring curbs, requiring lighting improvements, locations of properties nearby. Mr. Sullivan, any concerns about this project from you?
You adequately light the parking area there, Eric, now, correct?
So, they're a one-shift daytime operation.
Okay, so you're never there after dark?
No.
I have no other comments or questions, Mr. Harvey?
I would like to add that Mr. Sullivan's office was very helpful in speeding this up for us, because we pushed them to get us on, get us on this meeting and not all this meeting. So, I wanted to let you guys know, not that you don't know, but they certainly helped us out on this.
I saw Mr. Sullivan slip you a $20 bill before.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say, how much?
All right, now it makes sense. Didn't realize.
He went to Lehigh, too, so I had to take care of it.
Ah, okay. All right. All right, yes, and, yep, you two guys and Mr. Bylen.
Can't beat that.
So, and you saw the.
No comment.
You saw the Fire Marshal's letter as well?
Yes, and just like the last applicant, that's more of a building permit issue that we'll take care of when we submit for that.
All right. All right. If no more comments or questions, is there any public comment? See no hands. Okay, this would be Resolution 1720. Yes. Granting a waiver of land development to Harsco. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I didn't say anything.
All right. Item five, consider authorization for advertising for the Falls Township Municipal Complex. For several years, as people know, the township has been looking at alternatives for the building that we're in, which presents a lot of challenges to us, to put it mildly, as we look at the roof that's been dripping water for the past half hour, and if anybody sees it or not, we can certainly see it. So, there were multiple possibilities raised, really, for, I'm trying to think exactly how long ago, goes back maybe seven or eight years, and then eventually, the township did take on the services of Kemble Bogret, an architecture firm, and more recently, T&amp;M's Construction Management Branch, to take a look at constructing a new building. And so, we are at the point now, after we have looked at the project, we've had people obviously within the building heavily involved in the design of the new building, board members involved, we've had numerous public meetings, and so, we're at the point where we are ready to go out to bid. The first question someone might have is, well, how, what do we think it's going to cost? And the answer to that is, we don't want to say that, what we think it's going to cost, because we want to let other people bid on it. Why would we, why would we tell them upfront what we think it's going to cost, and then they bid what we think it's going to cost, when maybe they were going to bid lower? So, we're not going to answer that question right now. We do have a couple of members of the professional team that's been working here. I was going to ask them, just to give a very brief summary for people that, you know, might not remember some of the details, some of the finer details. We've had land development already, we've had our zoning board, or rather, our planning commission look at this, and so, we've spent quite a lot of time on the planning aspects. I think we're ready for bidding. I know, Mr. Trump, if you want to just give some details about, you know, what we're looking to construct right across the, from the parking lot here where we're sitting.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Yeah, Jonathan Trump from Kemble Bogret Architects. We've been working with the township for five or six years, and I won't go through all the history that you just went through, but describing the building, we've got actually two buildings that we're going to be building on the site. We've got an approximately 57,000-square-foot police and administration building. Approximately 2/3 of that building is really dedicated to the police operations. We'll have all the facilities for Sallyport. We'll have all the facilities for Sallyport, for holding offices for the staff and the patrol, as well as a large training room, which is something they haven't had in the past, and will continue to provide all the services that they do so well for the township right now. The remaining approximately third of the building is for the administration, so, for the administration itself, tax office, finance office, zoning codes, things of that nature, and you've gotten, so that'll, that'll pretty much, you know, duplicate what you've currently got here, but, you know, you've got a lot of new things that are coming, we've got a very large community room that will be available to resident township groups, as well as some enhanced space for parks and recreation, which they don't currently have at all. In addition to that big building, we've got about a twelve thousand square foot public works building that will completely update the facility that they have here, we've got five service bays, a lot of storage, and offices for those folks as well. We have designed all these buildings to a LEED Silver Standard, we are not going for LEED actual certification, but the project is designed to that standard. We'll have a geothermal system for heating and cooling in the buildings, all the lighting fixtures are LED, so we've done our best to be as energy efficient as we can be in this day and age. So, once these new buildings are constructed, I guess, the administration building on this side, and the public works on the other side, the township can move into those new facilities, then we sort of take on the next phase of the project, which is to demolish this building, create all our parking lots, and enhance our stormwater management systems to comply with today's codes, and in doing so, all that project should probably take, from start to finish, about two years. So, if the board sees fit to put this out to bid tonight, we should be able to have documents ready this coming Thursday, for bidders to start picking up and creating their bids. We'll have a pre-bid scheduled for August 1st, and we'll probably schedule one or two other times where the contractors can come visit the site and the existing building. Currently, we're scheduling bids to be due back August 29th, and if everything is all good with bids, and the people who will be performing the work, we could recommend that the township, by about mid-September, award contracts as well, so, that's about where we stand.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, so any public comment needed? See no hands. Okay, is there a motion then to authorize, or any other comments from board members, or questions from board members?
No, nothing.
No, nothing.
I'm just going to point out a couple of things. Our original idea was to renovate this building, and when Kimmel Bogret came in, we told them to just look at it like a blank canvas, and the price that they came up with to renovate this building was astronomical, and the price to build a new building was basically the same as renovating this building, because the amount of work of moving the staff upstairs, while renovating downstairs, moving them back downstairs, you know, everything else. The police department is the majority of this new building, and one of the problems we have with this police department here, is it's so spread out, and for the accreditation process for our police department to receive that, there's so much they have to meet, that's so, such a challenge for them, that we're almost, and Chief can attest to this, we're really pushed to our limit here with the police department and, and space. Those are just a couple of things, and the Parks and Rec Department is something that we really don't have. We have no space for recreation in the building. We have a couple of rooms upstairs that they can use, but that's something that would be in the new building, as Mr. Trump pointed out. That's all I have, I just want to point those couple of things out.
Okay, no, thank you, those are all good points. All right, so if there's no other comments or questions, is there a motion then to authorize advertisement for the New Falls Township Municipal Complex?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, as part of the process of constructing this, the township is also entering into what's called a project labor agreement, and I'll ask the solicitor to discuss a little bit of that, what that means, and also talk about the feasibility study that was done, that we're going to be looking at adopting this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. As part of the process of getting the bid specifications ready for the new municipal complex, the board instructed the manager, the engineer, and my office to conduct a feasibility review regarding doing the project with a project labor agreement, or what is commonly referred to as a PLA. The purpose of doing the feasibility study was to determine whether or not doing the project with a PLA would be in the township's best interest. Specifically, in working with the manager and, and the engineer, we looked at the various advantages of doing the project with a PLA, which essentially allows for better coordination, and also making sure that the availability of skilled labor on the job is high throughout. One of the things that certain municipal and government projects are finding, and why PLA's are becoming a little bit more prevalent, is that there is, as we know, as we've discussed, there are a lot of construction projects, a lot of municipal construction projects going on in southeastern Pennsylvania right now, and the ability to find highly skilled labor, and then to be able to coordinate all of the various trades that will be on the job site during this construction, has become more and more difficult for municipalities. In completing the feasibility study, it was determined that the PLA, as part of this project, would be in the best interest of, of the township, and as the conclusion of the feasibility study indicates, there were essentially five goals that would be accomplished. First, there would be a certainty of a skilled and sufficient workforce, there would be a verification of the training and qualifications of the craft, craft labor involved in the project, there would be a high-quality control, there would be a security of the building site, and finally, there'd be an avoidance of risks associated with labor strikes through no-strike provisions. So with that in mind, the manager, and the engineer, and myself have completed the feasibility study, which you all have copies of, and we believe that, we would recommend that the feasibility study be adopted as part of the bid that you just authorized a few moments ago.
Comments or questions for Mr. Clark?
No.
I have none.
No.
Any public comment needed? See no hands. All right, so is there a motion to adopt the feasibility study dated July 2017, as relates to this project?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, well, thank you for, and with those two items, just thank not only the, the professionals that are here from T&amp;M, and from Kimmel Bogret especially, but also Mr. Clark's office, and Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Gray as well, for all the work they put into it, so, I was just waiting for the numbers to come in, and hoping that they're good. Item number seven is consider the 2017-18 diesel and unleaded fuel bids for Falls Township. Mr. Gray?
The Bucks County Consortium Fuel Bid was recently opened by Upper Southampton Township. As part of the fuel bid, Falls Township uses ultra-low sulfur diesel and unleaded regular. The low bid for ultra-low sulfur diesel was Riggins', and that was for less than six thousand gallons delivered, would be point one-two-seven-five for the delivery, and for the unleaded regular was Petroleum Traders Corporation. For six thousand gallons or greater, delivery is point zero-zero-three-seven. All pricing is done by the fair market value of the OPI-S Philadelphia Weekly, which is posted every Monday, and delivery charges specified in the bid. The board is asked to consider this fuel bid at this time. In addition, Mr. Lawson is here from the Public Works Department for any questions the board may have.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The fuel bid is sent out every year by Bucks County Consortium, Upper Southampton. It's received by us via email. We go over the pricing, we look for the best pricing. The last couple of years, it's been around the same, Riggins' and Petroleum Traders'. So, I feel confident of wiring the bid to them.
Okay. All right, comments or questions for Mr. Lawson?
No.
Do we have service contracts, like, who takes care of the tanks and the pumps? Is that part of?
No, it's not part of this. We have, Bayer Pumps comes in and does our pumps. We just had an audit of our tank and pump last year, that we had to do for our licensing. We did have to get a lot of work done to it, just because tanks get inspected every ten years, so within them ten years, regulations have changed, so we got really socked with it, and we got everything up to code at this time. Tank's in good shape, with some of the piping, not that it was worn through, but the thickness of it, when they did the testing, was thin, so it was at that borderline of getting fixed, and we got it all fixed and up to date. So, we're good to go with that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Nothing.
No? I don't have anything either. Is there any public comment? See no hands. Okay, so is there a motion then to approve the use of the consortium fuel bid, Riggins' Incorporated, Petroleum Traders Corporation, as outlined in the memo dated 6/21/17 from Mr. Lawson?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. All right, the minutes for last meeting, comments or questions, corrections?
Have nothing.
No, if not, is there a motion?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Lawson.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for June 20th, 2017, as presented?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Engineers report, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. We had a pre-construction meeting yesterday for the Vermillion Hills Open Space Project. Contractors said they'll be able to start in just about a week, and expects to be a two-week project, so we certainly think that probably should be done shortly before the end of August. That's the small drainage project in Vermillion Hills Park. Twenty-seventeen road program, Pico is winding down their gas relocation and service adjustments. They should be done by the end of this week, so we gave JDM a notice to proceed in the twenty-seventeen road program for Walton Drive, so they would be starting, probably not Monday next week, but sometime in the next two or three weeks they should start. They expect to be done within about five weeks. Sounds pretty aggressive, but we'd be very happy to see that. If that was true, then the landscaper would take over sometime, probably beginning of September. We had a pre-bid meeting for the Vermillion Hills Foot Bridge, nobody seemed to decide they need to come to the pre-bid meeting, so we're expecting to get bids to open on August 8th. Hopefully, we'll get some bids, if we don't, we'll be in the same position we are with the fishing pier, where we can go out and hire a contractor. When that, that becomes the case, we'll solicit bids immediately after the bid opening. I believe that's all I have at this time, if there are any questions.
Okay, comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan?
So, the Vermillion Hills Bridge, it's just, do you expect any bidders on it?
We've expected bidders every time, we actually had people come to the first couple of pre-bid meetings. We will solicit hard, the people we know that can do this kind of work.
And then, we can go to a contractor after that?
Yeah.
So, it will get accomplished in the next?
We're hoping in September. We actually haven't authorized the supplier to start building the bridge yet, but as soon as we have a contractor in place, we'll do that.
Got it, thank you.
Have nothing.
What about the ongoing issues with the landscaper?
They are working much better, and they have a plan to finish. I imagine it's still going to take, you know, through probably the end of September to get everything done the way it should be done.
Is it looking better, I haven't been over there in a few days?
It does look better, that's my understanding.
That's your understanding, okay. Where do we stand with the fishing pier?
Fishing pier, we solicited bids because we didn't get two bids, through the public bid process twice. We did get a price from the original contractor who bid a couple of years ago. There needs to be some negotiation between our office and them, because they came much higher than we thought they would.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Yeah, just to reiterate, the, the challenge we face, you know, the road program, obviously, you know, no one in the county really does a road program as aggressive as the one this township has done for, for decades, really, but the challenge that we face, working on the other side of Route One, the, you know, Pensbury Heights and Hedrow and that area, is that there are a whole lot of gas mains, natural gas, which really don't, you don't have in, if you're also living in town or, or other parts of, of the township, and so, before any work can be done, as you heard Mr. Sullivan say, you know, the energy company has to come out and actually physically lower all of those, you know, gas pipes and mains that are in the road, going to people's houses, you want, you want them to do that before you start running machinery through, excuse me, and digging a roadway. So, it's been a standard delay, it seems like they're getting faster.
They're much faster this time, absolutely.
Yeah, because I know we've had times where it took months and months and months and months for them to do that, and the road program is ready to move, which is waiting for that utility company to make those changes, and they have to do it, we can't do it, so. So that's, you know, for people over, especially on Walton, who are sort of wondering when it's going to start, hopefully, again, you know, again, knock wood, next week. If there are no more questions, is there?
Just one comment. I'd like to, you know, I asked Mr. Sullivan about the landscaping. In the past, the landscaping was part of the general contractor's concern, he hired a landscaper. When the Bernard Drive and all the other streets there, and Rice Drive was done, the big reconstruction, it was a nightmare with the landscaper. So, moving forward, we're hiring a landscaper ourselves. So, the difference now is, he's working directly for Falls Township, so we have a lot more control. It's a very slow process getting restoration back to the way it's supposed to be, and the way people want it. It's frustrating for a lot of people, knowing that they had, and what they have now, but we have a lot more control now, right, Mr. Sullivan?
That is correct.
Right.
Unfortunately, we still take low bid.
Yeah, and we're still forced to take the lowest bidder, so, that's part of the problem as well. But, you know, we do have a little bit more control now than when they're working for James D. Marcy instead of us. That's all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the engineers' report dated July 13th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the bill list for this month, the bill's the amount of $2,546,424.16. Of that, 2.5 million, about 1.3 million is salary and benefits, another 100, excuse me, another 400, roughly 20,000 is insurance, work comp insurance and general insurance, about $300,000 for the road program, as well as about $42,000 for a new police vehicle, and 50, almost 60,000 in escrow, which is developers' money, and another roughly 50,000 that comes from state funds, not taxpayer fund, not Falls Township funds. So, we're looking roughly, with those, just those couple items, about one point, excuse me, about 2.2 million of the 2.5 million is just those couple, couple of things, salary benefits, road program, insurance, you know, police vehicle, escrow funds, and state aid, or state funding. Any questions for Mr. Gray regarding the bill list?
No.
No.
Public comment? See no questions, no hands. All right, is there a, is there a motion then to pay the bills, $2,546,424.16?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Paul?
Mr. Galley?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Okay, we had an executive session before the meeting, so we're not going to have one now. Chief, you're up, have our police chiefs report. Chief Wilcox is here. He's got his summer uniform on as well, just like we do. Tried to get Mr. Gray to come in a, in a polo, but he, I don't know.
Good evening, Mr. Harvey, members of the board, staff. I want to start this off a little bit different this evening. If you received your Courier Times this morning, the front headlines of it was, the creation of a new drug task force, and creating this new drug task force, the district attorney in conjunction with the county commissioners, started something new. In doing so, we were going to lose one of our best police officers, and we did, Jared Eisenhower. Both Lieutenant Plutnik and I had the pleasure of going in and watching him sworn in yesterday. I went with kind of mixed feelings, because not only, he is one of our best officers in this police department, he was the best of the best when it came to drugs, and they recruited him. He came in to me before he, he left, before he even took the job. He came in to me, and he told me that he was being recruited, and I told him that he had to do what was best for him. This was his passion to do this. He teaches people in the, in the county how to do this. This guy is really, really good. We lost a true professional. When you say the best of the best, that's not a cliche with him, he is one of the best. We almost lost Chris Clark also to the county, but Chris changed his mind the last changed his mind the last minute. That was the good news of that. Officer Stephanie Meteli is doing much better. She's recovering nicely. That was her, an horrific accident that she was in. And thank God that she's here. She had her guardian angel on her shoulder there, and she's lucky to be here with us. We're going to lose Officer Mike Philippi at the end of the, he's taking all his vacation at the end of July, and then he will be officially finished with us at the end of August.
He's retiring?
Pardon?
He's retiring?
Yes, he's retiring, yes. The way we're losing people here. We have the graduation from the Youth Police Academy, the 27th of July. Our traffic enforcement continues. We have been very successful on the Route 1 corridor. We've managed, I like to think that we've managed to slow people down a little bit here, and on the other areas where we've had problems. Our detective bureau continues to be very successful in dealing with our drug law enforcement. They've been doing very good. In fact, right before Jared left, he cleaned up a lot of cases, and they made at least 10 to 15 more arrests. That's how good Jared was. The good part about that is Jared won't be gone. He'll be working in conjunction with our detectives, and that, it's just that he's not our detective anymore. And finally, our bike patrol, we're trying to get them out as much as we can. There's been nights where we just don't have enough people. We're working shorthanded. With two people now on, with two people out on disability, not disability, but injured on duty, we have two people out. And with the losing Jared, that affects our night shift. We will get, we'll get back. This happens all the time. Any questions from the board?
Questions for the chief?
I have none.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Manager comment?
Yes, just a few items tonight. First item, township received a letter from Mr. Sullivan, TNM, regarding escrow release number one for premium lift. In his letter, he is recommending a release of $134,154. The board has asked to release, approve escrow release number one for premium lift.
Okay. Comments or questions?
No questions.
Is the project done?
No, it's not done.
It got started, though?
He did, yes.
That's great.
He's done a lot of work. It's going well.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the escrow release, $134,154?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes. Township received another letter from Mr. Sullivan regarding escrow release number nine for Marsville Commons. In this letter, he is recommending a release of $42,768. The board has asked to consider releasing this escrow.
Comments or questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion then to release the amount $42,768 to Marsville Commons LP?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes. Recently, the township received a request from Tracy Timby, co-coordinator of Township Against Graffiti, or TAG, requesting a contribution for the program. In the 2017 Falls Township budget, $5,000 was included for this program. The board has asked to consider a $5,000 donation to TAG.
For those not familiar with what TAG does, it is basically, and it's titled, Townships Against Graffiti. Essentially, it is a program that's run throughout the county. If there is any graffiti in Falls Township, for example, we call TAG, and they come out and clean it up. And they're, they work pretty quickly. You know, we've
Great job.
Yeah, they do a very, very good job, and they do it all over the counties. But it's basically something that is funded through the different townships donating money, and other private donations as well. So, is there, are there any questions for Mr. Gray?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the $5,000 donation to TAG?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Seconding.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes. Just want to announce several businesses, new businesses, that opened up in Falls Township during the month of June. They include LNZ Jewelry and Gifts at 81 Big Oak Road, the Princeton Tri-State Center for NLP at 225 Lincoln Highway, Action Network 300 West Trenton Avenue, Scott's Security Services, 57 Vermillion Way, Almo Corporation, 16 East Cabot Boulevard, The Grooming Salon, 332 West Trenton Avenue, Greg Mahan's Auto Repair, 8821 New Falls Road, and Allstate Insurance, 914 Trenton Road. Also, I just want to announce that there are Mylars ready for signature for premium excavating located at 269 Canal Road. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. Board comment. Mr. Gallaway?
No comment tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brasky?
Just one thing. A while back, we had received the letter, I think it was May, from Rob Crozier in regard to the planning commission. He recently had a long-term member resign, Andrew Glay. At this moment, I'd like to nominate Rob Crozier to fill that spot.
Okay.
Seconding.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Dent?
No comment.
Okay. Just a few things from me. I know earlier today, or earlier in the meeting, the Youth Police Academy was mentioned, actually just a few minutes ago, by the chief. I stopped by yesterday to see how they were doing. It's roughly 65 students, you know, teenagers either interested in police work, or maybe interested in military service, or some other kind of first responder occupation. And they are under the training of a lot of staff members, officers from Falls Township, but also officers from Lormakefield, from Marsville. There are guest speakers who come in from the FBI, from the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, state police, county detectives. And over the three weeks that they're in this training, they're in their, sort of the second week now, they really are, go through the wringer, almost like a junior police academy, what you'd expect to go through if you really were a police officer. And it's, it's a great opportunity. And the officer in charge of this project, Officer Jaeger, who does a lot of the DARE graduations as well, has really made this a very, very successful program that I think is going to get copied pretty soon. I'm surprised it hasn't been copied already by some other police departments in this county, because it's the only program like it in the county. And if you see sort of the clothing, you know, containers where you can drop off old clothing, a lot of them will have a police shield on them. There's various ones just up and down Lincoln Highway here. And in fact, I think there's one, a couple at Yatsko Field as well. Those, all the clothing that's put in there, all the money that's raised from that goes to support this program, is the Youth Police Academy program. And there's a lot of those clothing deposit boxes, I guess if you want to call them, all around the township for various charities. And certainly, you're not trying to take anything away from any of the charities, but if you do see those with the shield, it looks like a police shield on them. It says, you know, Falls Township Youth Police Academy. That's where the, that's where the money's going. So, it's a great program. And I had a chance to speak briefly to the, to the students who were in it, and told them to just try and get as much knowledge as they could over the, over the couple of weeks, that they're with these, with these people. And it's, again, hats off to Officer Jaeger and to the chief as well for supporting the program. Also, I want to mention, we don't usually mention this, we talk, in December, we, the township hires a professional auditing firm to audit the books of the township. And these are independent auditors. They come in, they have access to everything. They interview staff members. They usually interview me as well, as a member of the board, talking, looking for any kind of irregularities in any of the, of the bookkeeping, or the finances, the spending, the, you know, money coming in, money going out. And this is usually when they give us their findings, and we have them dated here, dated June 22. And as usual, they have found absolutely no irregularities in any of the financial operations of this township. And that has everything to do with certainly manager Pete Gray, who was our finance director before becoming manager, as well as Betsy Rukoff, who is our finance director now, and the rest of the staff. There are a lot of people in this building from finance department, parking rec, who deal with, deal with money, and how that money's coming in, and how it's being spent and allocated and taken care of. And this independent auditing firm, you know, has come in and said that, you know, just that we've got a top-notch staff here who do a wonderful job of protecting the finances of this township and the taxpayers' money. So, I want to publicly make that comment and thank Mr. Gray, and obviously the whole staff here at the township for all the work they do. And I think that's it for me, actually. I want to thank everybody for all the work they put in, and hope everybody's having a good summer, and continues to have a good summer. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.